Welcome to the School Board Meeting of May 12, 2020. I hope everyone is staying safe from COVID-19, practicing social distancing, wearing masks, and washing their hands often. The first item on the work session agenda is a pledge of allegiance by Beverly Hills Middle School students.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
During this unprecedented time, while schools are closed and social distancing requirements are in place, the Upper Darby School District needs to continue certain aspects of its business, which includes decisions concerning pandemic planning. For this reason, the Upper Darby School District will continue regularly scheduled school board meetings while Governor Wolf's emergency declaration is in place. It is the plan of the school board to hold these meetings with the minimum required departures from normal operating procedures. The Upper Darby School District School Board COVID-19 Special Operating Procedures Document outlines expected departures from these normal operating procedures and the policy justification for such departures. At the start of each board meeting held during the emergency declaration, the board will review the departures from the normal operating procedures as well as their justifications. While schools are closed and social distancing requirements are in place, the Upper Darby School District finds it necessary to hold virtual school board and school board committee meetings to complete required business. These virtual meetings will allow for public viewing and participation. Following practices already in place for regular meetings, all virtual school board meetings, in addition to allowing near-real-time public viewing and participation, will be recorded, and the recordings made available after the meeting. In order to hold virtual school board meetings, adjustments need to be made to the following existing school board policy. These adjustments have been outlined in the Upper Darby School District School Board COVID-19 Special Operating Procedures. I'd like to turn it over to Dr. McGary for some more detailed information about participation in tonight's meeting. Thank you.
Poor President Brown, thank you. We've made every effort to maintain each feature of our regular meeting as we plan our transition to virtual meetings. Tonight, we will have our principals present during the work session as they normally would. We also had our students list in the pledge. Our school board representatives will also present their reports virtually this evening. During my report, I will also recognize students for their excellence and provide them with certificates at a later date. Upper Darby School District residents who wish to submit comments have been provided with two ways to do so. They are to send an email to committeequestions@upperdarbysd.org. Again, you could send an email to committeequestions@upperdarbysd.org. Please provide your name and address and what report you'd like to comment on. Those who would like to comment at the end of the meeting must do so by having sent the board a comment or a question prior to 7:30. They could also call and leave a message at 610-789-7200, extension 2000. Again, you can send an email to committeequestions@upperdarbysd.org, or call and leave a voicemail at 610-789-7200, extension 2000, and your voicemail will be sent to us through our email system. A link to the district's official YouTube channel has been shared in the board meeting advertisement, in subsequent parent link communications, across the district's Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter, as well as other social media accounts. Opportunities for public comment will be provided at the conclusion of each board report respectively and at the conclusion of the board meeting. The board will consider public comments respective to each board report prior to the board taking action on a board report, for example, personnel, curriculum instruction, facilities, etc. To be clear, all comments for a board report must be received by the end of the board report prior to the board taking action. General comments must have been received no later than 7:30 p.m. tonight. General comments will be read at the end of the board meeting, prior to the conclusion of the meeting. We will follow our three-minute time limit for general comments, but we will make sure full comments are included in the record. There is a seven-to-ten-second delay on the live stream. The board will provide wait time following each board report in order to assure that all comments are received. Again, please make sure that you send an email to committeequestions@upperdarbysd.org, and the report with which you'd like to comment, please leave your name and your address, or please call 610-789-7200, extension 2000, and also leave your name, address, and the report that you are commenting on. Thank you, Board President Brown.
Thank you, Dr. McGary. The second item on the work session agenda is a presentation by Dr. McCarthy Frick, Charles Kelly's elementary school principal, on leaders in school.
So, good evening, everyone, and first and foremost, I hope you are all well and safe. So, good evening, President Brown, Vice President Mitchell, members of the school board, Superintendent Dr. McGary, members of the administrative team, and members of the community. I am Dr. Melanie McJoe McCarthy, proud principal of Charles Kelly Elementary School, and I am very excited to have the opportunity to share with all of you a very special event we have every year at Charles Kelly, as well as how learning is taking place during the current time we find ourselves in. The video you are about to see highlights one of our favorite weeks during the school year, Dr. Seuss Week. We celebrate reading across America, reading across our classrooms, and reading across the district during this week. We look forward to all of the community visitors that join us during that special week. As we look back over the course of this school year, we wanted to highlight an event that everyone, visitors, families, staff, and most importantly, our children enjoy. As we transitioned teaching and learning from classroom settings to an online platform, we asked our families to share how their child was reading while at home. We included our students' virtual learning in this video, as we believed that was important to highlight. As always, we want to thank everyone who you will see in this video for their continued support of all that we do at Charles Kelly. Specifically, we would like to thank administrators, community members, and family members for joining us that week. We would also like to give a special thank you to Dr. McGary and Mr. Brown for taking time out of their very busy schedules to read to our children. We hope you enjoy the video.
If you believe that you're in need of a thneed, if you can see an elephant in your tree, if your umbrella gets wet with oobleck instead of rain, then Dr. Seuss is on the loose in your brain. If you notice a drum tummy it's numb, talking to a flububer bab boober bubs, and you tell the crazy news to your friend Foo Foo this new, then Dr. Seuss is on the loose in your brain.
While those who's are irritating you again, come for a feast in my love pile of house. It's wonderfully good of you, snake, but no, I'm having lunch with a...
Raffalo.
...raffalo.
What's a raffalo?
If you answer your whisper my phone, to take a car from a jellyfish named Jimbo Jones, and then you leap into your Skeegle mobile and drive away, then Dr. Seuss is on the loose in your brain.
You've decided it's a bit more fun that way. If you find in every story that there's a lesson there for you, oh, then I'm afraid it's true. If you take your eggs sunny side up in green, if you make up silly rhymes when you speak, if you shout out hooray for different duper day, then Dr. Seuss is on the loose in your brain. Dr. Seuss is on the loose in your brain. Oh, Dr. Seuss is on the loose in your brain.
In your brain, in your brain, in your brain.
In your brain.
In your brain, in your brain, in your brain.
In your brain.
In your brain, in your brain, in your brain.
In your brain.
In your brain, in your brain, in your brain.
In your brain.
In your brain, in your brain, in your brain.
In your brain.
In your brain, in your brain, in your brain.
In your brain.
In your brain, in your brain, in your brain.
So, Barkley and I are back, as I promised we would be. Mr. Barkley, should we tell the boys and girls the story that I'm going to read them? I can't hear you. We should? Okay. The story we're going to read you today, well, I'm going to read it, is called "Hunches in Bunches." Do you want to stay for the story, or do you want to go? You want to go? Okay. Say bye-bye to the boys and girls. Bye, boys and girls.
So, I hope you all enjoyed the video, and thank you for giving me an opportunity to highlight what we did at Charles Kelly during our Dr. Seuss Week, and just to give you a little glimpse of what we are doing while we are all at home. So, again, thank you so much, and stay well.
Dr. McCarthy Frick, I just wanted to thank you again for allowing me to be a part of that. I had a fantastic time. I'm so thrilled that Charles Kelly is one of my schools as a liaison. It was just marvelous, and I really appreciate the royal cape that I know my colleagues don't have. So, thank you very much for that. I really appreciate it. The third item on the work session agenda is a presentation by Dr. Brian Orson, Beverly Hills Middle School principal, on the Royal Ambassadors.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, School Board, Dr. McGary, administration, staff, students, and members of the community. I am Brian Orson, and I thank you for giving me the opportunity to highlight Beverly Hills Middle School. The students, staff, and parents that make up BH are an amazing group. As we worked on deciding what we wanted to do for this presentation, we knew we wanted to somehow include how we are persevering during this unprecedented time. To that end, we decided that we wanted to let everyone know that even though we are not physically together, we are still striving for excellence, and that we are still Royal Ambassadors. Please start the video.
How are you guys? Everybody wave. Uh, you know what? I was thinking about being a Royal Ambassador, even though we're not in school anymore. What makes you still a Royal Ambassador?
I've been practicing safe social distancing to make sure that me, my family, and my friends are staying healthy.
I have my sister with her homework and my mom with her chores.
I'm learning how to cook during the pandemic.
I help my kids with their schoolwork during this pandemic.
I am a senior. I help my patient during this pandemic time.
I do my school and practice proper IG.
I watch my sister while my mom is at work.
I work hard every day to complete all my assignments.
I do the best that I can in school and doing my work.
I ask a lot of questions to help better understand school.
I'm getting my work done and helping my mom with the house.
I'm keeping connected with my students on school days.
And we're doing brain breaks.
I keep the spirit of Beverly Hills online.
I'm a student, and I'm a student, and I'm still writing, because I know I can reach out to my teachers, and they'll always respond.
I read to my students every day to make sure they understand our lessons, and on every Friday, we meet up and we have a video chat so we can discuss our week.
I'm using Interpretalk to keep in touch with my students and their families.
I am virtual math club advisor.
I'm working with our families to ensure our students have everything they need while working online.
I am working diligently every week to help my students complete their assignments, respond to any questions or concerns they may have, and also working with families to send them well wishes and words of encouragement during this unprecedented crisis.
And I do the best to help my students do the best that they can, and they teach me a lot about school agief. That's what makes me still a Royal Ambassador.
That is why I'm a Royal Ambassador.
That's why I'm a Royal Ambassador.
That makes me a Royal Ambassador.
That's what makes me a Royal Ambassador.
I am still a Royal Ambassador.
I am still a Royal Ambassador.
I'm still a Royal Ambassador.
I'm still a Royal Ambassador.
I am still a Royal Ambassador.
We are still Royal ambassadors. We are still Royal ambassadors.
We are still Royal ambassadors, right, guys?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
Dr. Orson, thank you for your leadership. I could not be more impressed with your staff and the students and the family atmosphere that you have at Beverly Hills. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you, President Brown. I would like to give a special thank you also to everyone who submitted their videos, and specifically Tony Ruddy, one of our sixth-grade language arts teachers, and Jason Taylor, for all they did to make this video come to life. Lastly, I'd like to thank all of you for giving us the opportunity to showcase Beverly Hills Middle School. Stay safe.
Thank you very much. The regular meeting of the Upper Darby School District Board of School Directors will please come to order. There was a closed session this evening from 5:45 until 7:00 p.m. for matters to be discussed within the limitations for closed deliberations as prescribed by Pennsylvania Act 93 of 1998. For this evening's meeting, there were personnel and litigation matters. Roll call, please, Mr. Rogers. Thank you.
As I call your name, please state that you're in attendance, and you can hear the proceeding. Dr. Hague?
I am present, and I can hear the proceedings.
Mr. Des Noiers?
I am present, and I can hear the proceedings.
Mr. War Savage?
I am present, and I can hear the proceeding.
Mr. Neal?
I am present and can hear the proceeding.
Ms. Dawes?
I am present, and I can hear the proceeding.
Mr. Fields?
I am present, and I can hear the proceedings.
Ms. Curry?
I am present, and I can hear the proceeding.
Ms. Mitchell?
I am present, and I can hear the proceedings.
Mr. Brown?
I am present, and I can hear the meeting. Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Policy 003 allows the board to suspend policies or part of policies when appropriate. Therefore, due to the current ongoing crisis and the governor's closure order, I make the following motions to suspend language in two of the board's policies until the next regularly scheduled meeting. Policy 006.1, which regulates attendance at meetings via electronic communications, I move to suspend the language requiring board members to be present. Specifically, the language would be, "A majority of board members shall be physically present at a board meeting when a board member attends through electronic communications." And Policy 006, which governs other requirements of board meetings, I move the suspension of the language requiring that those members of the public wishing to participate be present. Specifically, the language in the section titled "Public Participation" would remove the words that read "present at a board meeting." Do I have a second?
This is Mrs. Mitchell. I second that.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, please say aye oppose and state your name for the record, please. If anyone abstains, please say aye abstain and please state your name for the record. Motion carries. The minutes of the combined work session/regular meeting of April 14, 2020, and the special meeting of April 28, 2020 are in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for their adoption.
This is Mrs. Mitchell. I second that.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Mrs. Buford, are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Okay. Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Anyone abstaining, please say aye abstain and state your name for the record. Motion carried. The report of the secretary, Mrs. Curry.
Thank you, President Brown. The report of the secretary is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
I second that, Mr. Brown. This is Mrs. Mitchell.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public, Mrs. Buford?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you very much. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please say aye abstain and state your name for the record. Motion carried. The report of the treasurer, Mr. Neal, please.
Thank you, President Brown. The report of the treasurer is in the hands of each board member, and it has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
I second that. This is Mrs. Mitchell.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public, Mrs. Buford?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you very much. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record, Anyone abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. Motion carried. We will now have the report of the student representatives, Lamia Mim and Karen Shazadi.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Karen. Board President Brown and Vice President Mitchell, as well as the other members of the Board of School Directors, Lamia and I have decided to slightly alter our presentation format for this evening. We have dismissed the district's effort to transition to the virtual environment, and we would like to do the same. As a result, our report to the board and the public will involve a group of students who have the opportunity to meet with the superintendent on a monthly basis during the school year. Lamia and I have decided to interview students who will be joining us virtually for our report this evening. Students are with us virtually and will type "I have a comment" in the chat when they would like to respond to the questions Lamia and I will be asking. Students will not use teachers' names or the names of other students. Dr. McGary and Mrs. Buford will call on students in the order they commented in the chat.
Student representatives or board members who wish to comment through Google Hangout should indicate this by typing "I have a comment/question" into the comment section on Google Hangout. The Google Hangout moderator, Ms. Buford, and Dr. McGary will manage any requests for comments from the board members and/or student representatives. Ms. Buford or Dr. McGary will acknowledge their desire to comment by typing the following into the comment section. I acknowledge board members intend to comment in the following order: name, name, etc. We will keep the questions and answers to no more than 10 minutes. We will ask the following questions. One, how has learning in the virtual and online environment been going for you? What are some of the concerns you have regarding the impact of COVID-19 will have on your future college career and others? And three, generally speaking, what has the emotional impact, if any, been like during the mandated school closure? Essentially, how do you feel?
Um, pertaining to the first question, going along with relearning during this time, I find it personally a little difficult because, um, I'm personally not one who learns well online. I'm usually somebody who's out there and is ready to have the teacher in my face so I can learn just from them, and like just having their personality, it really helps me learn too, but that connection is personally lost when I am in, like just watching a video or on a Google Hangout.
Hello, it's Malika and Neil here, senior of Class of 2020. And, um, the online learning, it is affecting my college process. It's not, it's sort of setting me back in a way. It's not, it's, sorry. It's not like, it's not pushing me forward in order to actually get ready for college and actually prepare. I know I'm about to be graduating soon, and, um, sorry for the background noise. I'm about to graduate soon, and it's becoming, um, yeah, it's just hard for me to learn online. Sorry.
I know I just gave you my own personal anecdote for the first question, but I was going to shift it to somebody who's again close to me, my brother. He is personally having a harder time than I am when it comes to this. He's really struggling to grasp onto the concepts in his classes, particularly in the subject of math. He's just having trouble understanding all, everything. And I'm just saying that, um, it can affect students differently pertaining to like subjects and stuff like that, but I really do think that everybody is at their own faults and advantages with the online school.
What are some of the concerns you have regarding the impact COVID-19 will have on your future college career, etc.? So, just looking at this question, ever since the lockdown began, I've been really worried about my grades in general, because I'm like Dylan, I'm a very on-the-spot learner. I have to be there, learn. So, when the lockdown first started, I was kind of like worried that my grades would slip, and my grades did slip, because honestly, it feels like I do a lot of the work, and the teachers help us up so much by providing work, but it feels like there's so much work that I can't keep up, and due to that, my grades slip. And then when I see it, I'm like, this isn't me. I get really worried, and I'm afraid that this will like affect my GPA, and I like colleges will look at it and like look at me differently when like this is not the, I guess, student I am, when I'm very productive throughout my day and my school life.
Well, I believe that virtual learning really affects the way we learn, because this is a very impersonal and non-interactive, even though I'm very proud to say that all of my teachers have been very understanding, and they have been pretty great with communicating with students. But it's just that no one was really prepared for these times, and this is affecting our education in many ways. Like, for example, I take calculus right now, and it's hard to learn math watching videos. This is not what we did... This is not what we did for like 10 years. We have been there, like our teachers were there. When we asked a question, they were there, like they would help us. And that's not how I was taught, and it is kind of tough to stay motivated and on task at the same time because like we have all this thing going on at the same time, so it's kind of tough.
Uh, I would like to add that on top of all the stress coming from the school in general, it's also stress coming from like the bigger organizations that colleges look towards. Because I'm personally going to be applying to college in November, uh, not November, but this coming fall, and I was scheduled to take my SAT when this all happened. And it's just kind of a roadblock because now they keep kind of backpedaling on everything they're telling us from these bigger organizations like the College Board and if you run the ACT. And they're giving us kind of false hope that we'll be able to do it as soon as possible. And that's just kind of adding to the stress that we are year upon from online schooling.
Uh, third question, generally speaking, what emotional impact, if any, has been like during the mandated school closure? Essentially, how do you feel?
Hi, this is Allison. Um, I would just like to say the teachers have done an amazing job communicating and helping students, all of my teachers, and, um, just the teachers across the board have been amazing through this difficult time. My concern and other students' concerns have been the fear and difficulty concentrating and learning in this environment. No one was prepared for this across our boards, but it's been more emotionally draining and mentally draining than anything. The workload has been, um, okay to deal with, but it is hard knowing from kindergarten up till the seniors. Um, it's definitely emotionally impacted everyone on all scales.
Um, I personally have had great experience with my teachers. They're really trying their best and it's really showing. But I, I don't know why, but like after like two to three weeks of just doing the same thing every day on online school, I've kind of been getting unmotivated and just not really willing to do anything anymore. Like I still do my work, but it's just like, I, I'll like procrastinate more and I'll go to turn it in or wait till the last day I can turn it in. And it's just kind of, I've seen such a drastic shift in my attitude toward school. It's just, it's just kind of scary to see that how, this is how impactful switching to online learning in a time of pandemic can be.
Uh, so adding on to what Dylan said, the communication between teachers has been great. My teachers have been supportive, but I think I speak for majority of my, like my friends and other students when I think, when I think I say mental health has been really low for most of us because this isolation not only has taken us away from, from like our friends and our teachers and our education, but because we feel so confined in our houses, we lack motivation. I know my friends who still go to work, but at work they're stressed because they're like, I have schoolwork to do and I have no motivation to do it. And even I know at home, like when I spend time with my family, like then I come back upstairs to my room doing some work and I'm like, I still have no motivation to do it. And I have no motivation. That goes on to my mental health. Like, wow, I know I should leave this. I just, I don't. I think that gives more of an emotional impact because I guess students will feel like they're fault if they don't do something or they don't end down time. But it's really not because they're, it's mentally like not the state of mind of doing it at the moment and they don't feel okay.
Um, at this point, we're just doing our work so we can get our credit. Uh, we're really struggling with maintaining motivation. A lot of us really don't have a lot of motivation left. We have so much going on. Sometimes we barely put any effort in our work. Sometimes I do not know what I'm actually learning if I don't stay on task as well as, as well as I would like to. And when I don't understand something, it takes up me, it takes us hours to do it the right way. I'm sure many other students can relate to these feelings as well.
Dr. Manfree's on the line. He's going to respond to the concern about grades and GPAs. The Director of Secondary Education, Dr. Manfree.
Thank you, Dr. McGary, and thanks to the kids for doing such a great job tonight. And I can certainly understand all of their angst and concern over their future in this current situation, but I do want to at least alleviate, uh, some concern that some students expressed regarding grade point average and grades and things of the like. Uh, so first of all, as far as your grade point average, your grade point average should not, will not be affected in a, in a negative way. Uh, the plan that Mrs. Simone and her team and I, along with Dr. McGary, came up with ensures that whichever grade is better, the third marking period grade or the fourth marking period grade, that will be the grade essentially manually placed as the final semester grade. So the fourth marking period can only help you. It can't hurt you as far as your grades are concerned. And for those students who are taking full year courses, which probably is not anyone who is in 12th grade, but for those students who are taking full year courses, because we've already administered a midterm exam, our plan was to provide a breakdown of, that follows, 30% for the first marking period, 30% for the second marking period, 30% for the third marking period, and 10% for the midterm unless the student does so well in the fourth marking period, and then we would break it out, 22 and 1/2% for each of the marking periods with 10% for the midterm. So the goal here really was to follow the Pennsylvania Department of Education's lead, to really do the best we can to provide as good an education as we possibly can without holding students accountable for a situation that is really out of their hands. So I just wanted to make sure that, that I mentioned that, that we do not want to affect students' grades negatively, their GPAs. We want them to do the best that they possibly can, but essentially, the fourth marking period can only help you, not hurt you.
Um, what are real-life barriers or obstacles that prohibit you from finding success in this online learning environment? If you find it beneficial, how so and why?
And the fourth question was, what advice do you have on improving online school instructions for the school district?
Um, I'll just kind of combine the two questions into one. Uh, the first one about barriers that I'm facing, I think it's more of just kind of like a personal thing. It's just like, I have two siblings and along with my work, they also need help with the work they don't understand. And that sometimes is a huge barrier to me because I take time out of like doing my work and I help them with their work and I make sure they understand. Um, and the second one about online improvement, I personally think that scheduled Zoom meetings for teachers would be a huge help because right now I have like Zoom meetings in Google Hangout for teachers and they're just kind of randomly placed. We, um, we've kind of developed our own schedule, but I think if we're going to continue with this, uh, hopefully not, but if we are to continue with this, we should establish a universal schedule, like first block, second block is at this time and teachers will be there at that time.
The main barriers that myself and other students have been faced with are obviously environment. Like it's not that anyone can change that at the moment, but it is more difficult, um, in your own setting rather than in front of a teacher with classmates, like it's much easier to get through the work. And like I said before, the motivation or the lack of motivation, um, due to being away from social interaction and experiences and memories that, um, everyone has lost during this time, it has hurt being able to work, um, and being motivated to complete the work that has been assigned. And to Dylan's point, I think that I agree with, um, moving forward for a better schedule, but not too busy of a, of a schedule so that kids can interact more with their teachers, however not overwhelming or overworking them with like a full school schedule, but a better opportunity for them to communicate on a weekly basis. Thank you.
Our last question is, if schools be open, do you have any fear of returning to school as we knew it prior to COVID-19?
Well, personally, I don't have a fear of returning to school, but I feel like a lot of people would. Um, only because of it's, most likely, hopefully not, it would still be in the, um, it would still be in the area of, you know, uh, spreading around the school. So I feel like a lot of people would have that fear, but personally, I would not have that fear. So, thank you.
Uh, going off of what Malachi said, I personally, I don't think I would have a fear. I don't. But regarding parents and them wanting to send their kids to school, I think parents would be more afraid to send their kids to school because they're worried about the second wave or they would be. And I think that would affect a lot of school attendance for students who like do want to go to school, but because they're like, they're in a sense forced not to go because their parents don't want them to get sick yet, if that makes sense.
Um, students, I want to thank you tonight for participating and giving us your really raw feelings about what we're all experiencing. Um, my own, my own daughter is a student at Louisiana State and she abruptly left school, um, just like you guys did this year, and transitioned to online learning. And I wouldn't exactly call it online learning. It was more like a self-study experience. Um, and I think that's what I'm hearing from all of you. I know the teachers have been really doing the best they can to support you and had to become like video producers overnight. And I know Dylan probably was helping the teachers with some of that. I have a feeling. Um, and I, I know all of you are very involved students and this is really hard for you. Um, just know we're all pulling for you guys. You know, none of us had to experience what you're experiencing and we know that you are going through, um, you know, all different kinds of emotions. And if you or any one of your friends are really suffering through this time and need to talk to someone, know that Dr. McGary will get you guys in touch with whoever you need and so will your teachers. So don't be afraid to reach out. Um, we know this is a difficult time. We don't want this to go on any longer than it has to, but we know that we're doing the best to keep you safe. But there are other things, um, like your mental health that we have to worry about. So please do not hesitate to reach out to an adult during this time. Um, we love you and we can't wait to see you back at Upper Darby. And for our seniors, um, if I don't get a chance to say congratulations, you are gonna go great places. Don't forget that. That's all.
Very. Um, my question i- is simple. I know, uh, you know, school's not all about academics and, um, I wanted to hear a little bit about after-school programming, extracurriculars, and how that's impacting the students. How is that impacting you? Um, whether it is a sport or a club, for instance, I sponsor Model UN at my school. And so I just wanted to know, how is it impacting you in regards to the extracurricular activity?
Uh, I love that question because it kind of takes me back because I'd like to consider myself in a place that was stretched a little too thin when it came to extracurriculars. I was a part, at the time, I was like part of the tennis team. I was part of the Rubik's Cube Club and so on and so forth. And it, it kind of makes you miss something. Like obviously, school isn't about, is about like the primary focus is academics, but it's like, you lose the part of the family that you had after school that you could go and see. Like, I know I lost my choir family and we lost the ability to go on a trip this year. Uh, for robotics, uh, we're all like really, we're all good friends. We ended up watching like the virtual world championships online, but it just isn't the same when you go from doing everything to instantly just having nothing to do. And I really do think that affects mindset as well. And I don't know, it's just, I don't know how to describe it. It's just feels something, feels like something's missing.
Dylan couldn't have said it any better. It's, it's like, I feel like I'm missing out on so much because even like after like the whole day of schooling, I would go to like my after-school activities and I would like see my friends and I would see my coaches and I would see like the after-school teachers who run the after-school programs. And like we would all be like a family and I just feel like I'm missing such a big part of that and it's my last year. So the more time I get with these people, like the better of an experience it is for me. And I feel so left out right now because of this.
That's a great point because most students, um, are motivated by their involvement after school and it's harder, as much we, as much as we can do to continue our academic education, it's harder to get those clubs and sports to meet and do stuff virtually. So that's definitely been a negative impact on not being able to do what we love to do with, um, on a daily basis.
So like Dylan and Lamia said, I built a family through most of my clubs and after-school activities. So like with my tennis team, I was captain on that team and I was playing singles for the first time. So it was, it was, um, you know, when the season got cut short, I was like, I was really sad because I couldn't really get the chance to show how good I've gotten over time. And, um, it was, that was sort of heartbreaking for me because I couldn't just do that. And with my club, I recently just started getting it running. Um, and I brought in some speakers. I mean, we were supposed to try and get a field trip going, but all that got shut down. So it was, it was really, really hard for me to keep up with my membership in the club. And now, now a lot of people are really, um, talking in the community message. But, um, it is, uh, it is what it is. I can't really control that. But it is really heartbreaking to have that all crumble down and especially outside of school stuff like Boy Scouts and all that. It's, it's, uh, it's tough with all this happening. But thank you.
Thank you so much, students, for responding to that question. I know your responses really do get me emotional and almost bring me to tears because I, I know, you know, at high school, it's such an important, uh, time for social emotional development and, uh, you know, making friends and like you said, many of you said, uh, having a family. And, um, you know, I'm happy to see that you guys are still making it through it. And I apologize that, um, a lot of your years have been cut short in regards to extracurriculars. And I hope that we have something, um, in place, at least for next year, um, in case if a lot of this is still occurring. So thank you again.
Yeah, I just had a quick comment. First, I wanted to, um, thank the students for being here and sharing your perspectives. It really is incredibly helpful for us. And, um, I want to sort of echo some of what, um, Mr. Manfree said, that we, we are, we are, we know what, that you're going through just a lot. I mean, everyone is, but to be your age going through this, I think is a really unique challenge. And I hope that, I'm hearing it from some of you that it, it sounds to me like you're being very hard on yourselves. And I really, really hope that you're being forgiving to yourselves also, that you're cutting yourself from slack. Um, and as someone, I teach, you know, at Temple University, I teach, I have former Upper Darby students in my classes all the time. Um, and, and I just want to sort of remind you, like everyone is going through this, including, you know, all of your future peers in college and all of your college professors, right? We, we also joined the Mad Scramble online. Um, and so as I said to some of my students, this, this entire, you know, this year is going to have this giant asterisk on it, right? And, and no one, no one is going to look at, um, you know, lower grades or anything else that looks, that sort of deviates from a previously successful path. No one in your future is going to look at that and say, oh, wow, that person was a slacker during the coronavirus crisis that shut down the entire global economy and disrupted everything. So, so just remember, you're only human. We're all only human and we- We're all only human, and we all know that this is unlike anything else you've experienced. It's unlike anything else any of us have experienced. So please take care of yourselves and, and know that wherever you're going, everyone else there will know how tough it's been. So, um, but keep up, keep up all the great things that you're doing. And I love to hear that you're staying in touch with your, your, um, classmates and clubmates and, and doing great things for your families. Thank you.
Hi, this is, uh, Don Fields. Um, I guess I'm echoing what, uh, Dr. Hague said. As a, but I just want to point out, uh, I really want to speak to one, one person said that, um, it's really hard to kind of stay focused on the work and to get it, to get it all done. And, and as an adult who is working with lots of other adults who are all working virtually, it is really hard to keep that focus. And, uh, and I just want to let you know that I, that I hear you. That we all hear you and, and, and we're all, we're all in that boat. I'm, I'm not saying this in the sense that it's tough for everybody. I'm saying like, yeah, it, it is hard. You're right. And, and like Dr. Hague said, don't be tough on yourself. Don't be tough on yourself if, if you, if you, if you lose focus and all of a sudden you've lost an hour or three. Uh, if you have to come back later to work on something, uh, like Dr. Manfree said, uh, this, this part of the year can only help you. Like Dr. Hague said, nobody's gonna, you know, hang this on you as a, as a, as a medal of shame or anything like that. It's, it's tough. It's, it's tough. And it's tough for the adults too, um, to, to sort of, to, to not get distracted. And so that's completely normal. That is, I would be concerned if you weren't having these problems. So, uh, let yourself off the hook. It's, it's totally appropriate. Okay? And, and thanks for everything that, uh, everybody's said and shared. It's, it's really, really something special.
This is, uh, Mrs. Curry. Um, I hope everyone can hear me. I just want to share my sentiment of, um, sadness, um, with all of you. I also have a senior who I try to encourage daily to get his work done. Um, and I know it's very difficult. And I also want to just, um, encourage you that your future is bright. Um, I tell him that every day. And, um, hearing all of you today be very honest about how you're feeling, um, really takes me to a place because, um, just last week, I was informed that my high school was closing down. So COVID-19 has stolen a lot from us. Um, but we have to consider the future. And I know that each of you who have expressed your feelings along with all of your classmates who you're missing and your teachers are feeling the same way. So I just want to encourage each of you to look towards your future. And as Dr. Hague says, give yourself a break because we all are, are working in the same, um, vigor to make ourselves great. But, uh, as I tell my kids in my own house, COVID-19 is trying to not let us be great, but we are. So just continue to do what you need to do and, um, get up and, and make short-term goals for yourself. Try not to be, uh, too long-term goal-focused because we have to move day to day. So thank you so much for your comments and your courageous, um, ability to come out and speak to the board and the public tonight about how you're truly feeling. I appreciate you all.
Thank you to everyone for their support and everything. And thank you for the oppor- opportunity to share our opinions and feelings and thoughts. Thank you, Board of Directors and Administration, for allowing us to provide the market report. We will continue to serve the board and community and share the joyous things and prideful happenings across the district.
Thank you very much, guys. We really appreciate you, and we love you all. Thanks for your support. It's just, I'm just so proud to be part of this district. It was just great years of being here for four years. Well, more than four years, but it was just amazing.
Yeah, like no matter what COVID-19 has taken away from me, it has taken, I don't know, it has not taken away any of my previous Udi experiences, and I will like take that with me forever, where, wherever I go.
Lamia, I'm so happy you said that last part. Uh, I'm just gonna add, you know, I wanted to just say that your stories will be one of perseverance and triumph. So you're gonna persevere through this, uh, and you'll be speak, you'll be spoken about, and you'll, you'll reflect on this as, uh, something of triumph. So, you know, our heart, all of our hearts go out to you collectively. But, um, the final story is not written. This will be, um, you, you're gonna triumph. You're gonna persevere, and you will triumph. Thank you. Okay. The budgeted personnel and enrollment reports have been made available to the board and the public and are recorded as part of the record. No vote is required. We will now have the report of the superintendent, Dr. Daniel McGary.
It's always tough following Kieran and Lamia. Uh, they are truly superstars. They've been here a long time. We've had some great student representatives to the board. But in this environment, the amount of interaction we've had, I mean, Kieran has even been involved on, on weekends, working on communicating and giving us insight. Sometimes I think she's setting me up to, to make fun of me, but she's the best. Um, Lamia, thank you so much, and to the students, thank you. Good evening, President Brown, members of the Board of School Directors, community members, students and members of my administrative team. I would like to thank Dr. McCarthy Frick, Charles Kelly Elementary School, as well as Dr. Rousseau and Beverly Hills Middle School for their presentations this evening. Kieran Lamia and the students who joined us virtually, thank you for taking the time to share with all of us your perspective regarding online learning. Members of the board this evening, you will be asked to take action on modifications to the current 2019-2020 school calendar. The recommended changes to the calendar will provide our staff and administration time to improve our online instructional program. At this time, we are still attempting to plan for several different options for the opening of the 2020-2021 school year. There is much uncertainty when it comes to the opening of school for next year. While it is our hope to be back in person, we are looking at how our district can meet CDC recommendations for social distancing. At this time, the governor has extended mandated closures until June 4th. I've also recently read a very comprehensive report published by the Maryland State Department of Education called Maryland Together: Maryland's Recovery Plan for Education, COVID-19 Response and the Path Forward. As other states and those around the world are opening up their school systems, here in Upper Darby School District, we are making sure that we are following their examples and their lead and making sure that we don't make any of the mistakes that might be made as this happens. And also focusing on their accomplishments and celebrations. There is so much to consider right now. A plan to open schools and practical social distancing will require transportation considerations, use of space and facilities, increased clean, cleaning of schools, consideration of appropriate personal protective equipment known as PPE, staffing, and of course, the way we will make use of our school schedules. We understand that our students and families need clarity and direction. I want to make that clear as we've heard from our students. We know that our parents and our students need clarity and direction. We also understand that our parents will need ample time to prepare for next school year, regardless of what we, we are able to pull off. The one clear certainty is that we will be required to have a plan to provide instruction virtually while preparing and balancing in-person instruction. In the midst of this crisis, we are planning and preparing to provide our students and this community the education they rightly deserve. We will need your help, however, as we continue to develop, implement, and improve our instructional practices. Thank you for your patience and understanding during this very uncertain time in our country. We will continue to send out communications regarding our plans for summer school and for the 2020-2021 school year. At this time, all of our facilities will remain closed. Summer school and extended school year, known as ESY instruction, will take place virtually. Last week was Teacher Appreciation Week. And I just wanted to again thank our Upper Darby Education Association for the work they are doing and always do. In the numerous virtual meetings we hold each day, I am always appreciative of the creative ideas of our staff and how they are accomplishing this during this very difficult time. I want to also provide a special thank you to the teachers of Upper Darby High School and to the administration at Upper Darby High School. The pressure and potential of a 0% tax increase will have implications to our programming in the district. We have certainly learned from the past and have included Upper Darby Union leadership on the decisions we may be forced to make in order to balance our budget. As discussed during our April presentation on the budget, a forced 0% tax increase would limit the district's ability to finance facilities projects and replace staff, especially at the high school level. The district will be providing an if-then-style presentation during our next public presentation on the budget in May. I also want to extend my appreciation to our principals, assistant principals, members of the Upper Darby Administrative, uh, School Association, as well as the Board of School Directors for the hours of time spent in responding to this pandemic. At this time, I would like to recognize some of our excellent student performances. Gabrielle Libirio, Upper Darby High School, for recognition as the Delaware County Chapter for the Pennsylvania Sports Hall of Fame, 2019 Fall Sports Scholar-Athlete. Allison Askeregi, who joined us this evening. Upper Darby High School in recognition of her receiving a medal for the highest test score at the DECA State Conference Professional Selling Event. Bridget Monaghan, Upper Darby High School for rec- uh, recognition as the recipient of the highest test score medal at the DECA State Conference Principals of Hospitality Event. Haley Campbell, Upper Darby School District, for recognition of third place in the DECA State Conference Hospitality, Tourism, and Professional Selling Event. It's also important to note that Haley advanced to Nationals in April. Colleen Kirk for receiving a $750 scholarship at the DECA State Conference. Dylan Ford mentioned our robotics team. The team had three robotics teams, or three robots compete in a competition. One of our teams placed as a semifinalist. Sarah Damat, Catherine Vivo, Aaron Jackson, and Hassan Hoke, Mohammed Hoke, and Sebastian Mastick. Girls' track. Siani Barnes, Upper Darby High School, second place at the Armory Meet with a jump of 37 feet 4 inches to move to eighth in the state and qualified for Nationals. Siani Barnes, again, Upper Darby High School, broke the school record in the triple jump, placed third at the Meet of Champs with a mark of 37 feet 11 inches. Gazmine Frelin, Upper Darby High School, third place in the high jump at the Armory Meet. There are so many positives happening in the Upper Darby School District. Despite this pandemic, as you heard from our students, our administrators, our teachers, and without question, our Board of School Directors, we are getting through this, and we're giving it the best we can. Thank you so much, Board President Brown. This concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. McGary, for that comprehensive report. We will now have an update on the April 28, 2020 Education and Pupil Services Committee meeting. Mrs. Curry will read the summary. A detailed summary of the meeting includes, including public comments can be found on Board Docs. Mrs. Curry?
Thank you, Board President Brown. Uh, my name is Gina Curry, and I will be reading the Education and Pup- Pupil Services Committee Report from April 28th. Um, there were three agenda items. Um, and during that time, all of them required board action. The first one was the Special Education Plan. Mr. Marshallak presented the final Upper Darby School District Special Education Plan. And this plan is a requirement of both Chapters 4 and 14 of the PA School Code and was posted on March 18th, 2020 for a 28-day review. The presentation focused on the process, followed highlights and changes. This item correlated to all goals of the Upper Darby School District Comprehensive Plan and requires board action this evening. Okay. Pardon me, I'm sorry. Um, number two was the Institute for Learning, SOAR, Supporting Ongoing Achievement Responsively Intervention. And this requires board action. Mr. Schwartz presented SOAR, Supporting Ongoing Achievement Responsively, a middle school math intervention program from the University of Pittsburgh Institute for Learning. SOAR aligns to Pearson Envision 2.0, which was implemented at the middle school during the 2019-2020 school year and will support and solidify students' learning. SOAR provides explicit and systematic instruction in the foundational middle schools, middle grades, concepts of fractions, ratios, proportions, and expressions and equations. All appropriate district paperwork was, has been submitted. This item correlated to Goal 1, 2, 4, and 6 of the Udi- of the Upper Darby School District Comprehensive Plan and requires board action this evening. If approved, this program will be implemented in the 2020-2021 school year. And then lastly, the third, um, item, which will require board action this evening, is the revisions to the 2019-2020 district calendar. Um, the district administration presented changes to the 2019-2020 school district calendar. All changes are a result of the school closure due to COVID-19. This item requires board action. There was one public comment on Agenda, Agenda Item 3, and this per, um, community member said, "I appreciate and support the move to end the academic year early. I have appreciated the district's response to this difficult situation and welcome an early end to online school. Plotting time for teachers and administrators to anticipate multiple plans for the fall and how this setback will alter education moving forward will be crucial for a strong start in the fall, regardless of the circumstance." And that concludes the report for Education and Pupil Services from the, um, the last, uh, meeting. Thank you, President Brown.
Thank you, Mrs. Curry. We will now have an update on the April 28, 2020 Finance and Operations Committee meeting. Dr. Hague will read the summary. A detailed summary of the meeting, including public comments, can be found on Board Docs. Dr. Hague?
Thank you, President Brown. The Finance and Operations Committee met on Tuesday, April 28th at 7:00 PM. There were four agenda items, all requiring board action, and all correlating with Goal 1 of the Upper Darby School District Comprehensive Plan. Item 1 was the ironing, ironing construction and renovation update. District administration and KCBA architects provided an update on this project. The administration is seeking approval for KCBA to move forward with the bidding process at tonight's May 12th board meeting. Item 2 was the bond issuance. District administration, PFM, and RBC provided an update on the upcoming bond issuance of 2020. Administration asked the board to move forward in adopting a max parameters resolution at the May 12th, 2020 board meeting. Item number 3 was regarding the district official website, web governance platform, and website accessibility tool contracts. Mr. Robert Hilinski, uh, excuse me, Halinski and Ms. Aronda Buford reviewed the current contract with Blackboard for website and web governance platform services and with Monsido as the website accessibility tool. Administration made a recommendation to execute an extension of the contract with Blackboard for website and web govern- web governance and with Ally as the website accessibility tool. The final item was the 2020-2021 Proposed Final Budget. In compliance with the Act 1 timeline, Mr. Rogers presented the 2020-2021 Proposed General Fund Budget. Administration asked the board to consider this budget for approval at the, at tonight's May 12th board meeting. The final budget presentation will be on June 16th, 2020, which will incorporate any legislative or internal changes. This, uh, all of these items correlated with Goal 1 of the Upper Darby School District Comprehensive Plan. Uh, several public comments were received. They're all available on Board Docs, but I will summarize them here. Um, they were primarily in response to the ironing project. Three commenters indicated concern about increasing taxes and the district's ability to pay for bond measures, particularly concerning the coronavirus. to pay for bond measures, particularly concerning the coronavirus crisis. One commenter asked about stormwater runoff issues near Aronimic, communication of the Aronimic Project, and whether the district might survey families on whether they are considering homeschooling or cyber schooling their children going forward. One commenter asked about the steps the administration has taken to get independent confirmation of the architect's estimate on the Aronimic Project. This commenter also asked whether the 21st Century Design Standards were still being integrated. And one, the final commenter did not indicate an Agenda Item number, but asked about the additional costs to the district for continuation of virtual schooling as compared to the normal budget. And that concludes the summary, President Brown.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hague. The Instruction and Curriculum Report, Mrs. Curry?
Thank you, President Brown. This is Gina Curry. The Instruction and Curriculum Report is in the hands of each Board Member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
This is Mrs. Mitchell. I second that.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the Board? Mrs. Buford, are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you very much. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. Motion carried. The Personnel Report, please, Mrs. Mitchell.
Thank you, President Brown. This is Mrs. Mitchell. Just before we go any further, though, for those who are following along online, I know Dr. Hague, you know, detailed a lot of the comments from the previous Finance and Operations Committee Meeting, and I just wanted people to note that if you wanted to hear the answers to those questions, you can look at the YouTube of that particular meeting, and all of those questions were addressed by the administration. So I just wanted to clear that up, because I know sometimes we, you know, read the comments and no one, you know, it's like a cliffhanger, we don't know who's, you know, what the answers are. But anyway, the Personnel Report tonight is in the hands of each Board Member and has been made available to the public, and I move for its adoption. This is Gina Curry, and I second it.
Thank you very much. Are there any comments from the Board?
Yes, I have a comment. This is Mrs. Mitchell.
Please go.
Thank you, President Brown. I did want to acknowledge our retirees tonight. We have two retirees tonight, Ms. Jean Curley, a teacher at Garrettford, and a teacher's assistant, Ms. Nina Benella at Westbrook Park. We wish you a healthy and relaxing retirement.
Thank you very much. Thank you for pointing that out, and congratulations to the retirees. Are there any other comments from the Board?
This is David Neal. I do have a comment. I wanted to give a congratulations out to Marcy Monachello at Garrettford Elementary School on obtaining her permanent professional status as an educator. So I just wanted to give her a shout out. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Neal. Are there any other comments from the Board? Okay. Are there any comments from the public, Mrs. Buford?
There are no comments from the public for the Personnel Report.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Buford. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. Motion carried. The Policy Report, Mr. Des Noiers.
Thank you, President Brown. There are four policies that have changes this evening that are in the policy report for first reading, and as a reminder, the policy changes that are up for a first reading tonight, there is no vote required tonight. A second vote will be held at the June Board Meeting, and if the policy changes are approved at the second reading, then they will be implemented. The four policies that have changes are, and I'll, so I'll state the policy and then a brief summary of the change involved. Policy 335, Family and Medical Leaves. There are no changes to Policy 335 itself. However, the Federal Families First Coronavirus Response Act, or FFCRA, contains specific provisions for the expansion of family and medical leave and paid sick leave effective April 2, 2020 through December 31, 2020. These temporary changes are explained in the new Families First Coronavirus Response Act attachment and a new employee rights poster, both in English and Spanish, that will be posted in district buildings and made available to employees. Any school district employee considering taking a leave of absence is urged to review Policy 335 and any appropriate attachments carefully. Any questions may be addressed to Human Resources. The next policy is Policy 626, Federal Fiscal Compliance. Policy 626 is being revised to include language regarding payment of staff with federal funds in extenuating or emergency situations in accordance with applicable law, regulations, or emergency declarations by state or federal authorities. The next policy is Policy 810.1, which is Drug and Alcohol Testing for Covered Drivers. Federal regulations being implemented require substantial updates to Policy 810.1 and the new attachment, 810.1 AR-0, that spells out drug and alcohol testing requirements and procedures for covered drivers. A covered driver is any district employee who drives, operates, or is in the actual physical control or movement of a school bus, school vehicle, or commercial vehicle owned, leased, or operated by the school district. The specific regulations being implemented involve a final rule issued by the Motor Carrier Safety Administration establishing the Commercial Driver's License Drug and Alcohol Clearing House. This national clearinghouse will contain commercial driver's license records. The district, as an employer of holders of commercial driver's licenses, will be required to perform a pre-employment search of this clearinghouse for any individuals being considered for positions in the school district, and an annual search of the clearinghouse for infractions for every covered driver the district employs. The nature and type of required testing is spelled out in both federal regulations and in Policy 810.1 and 810.1 AR-0. And finally, Policy 904, Public Attendance at School Events. The updates to this policy are changes related to tobacco and vaping products. The changes are very similar to changes that have recently been made to Policies 222 and 323. These changes are required to comply with changes to Pennsylvania law. That concludes my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Des Noiers. The Supplies Report, Mr. Worsavage.
Thank you, President Brown. It's a pleasure to be speaking with everyone this evening. The Supplies Report is in the hands of each Board Member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
This is Gina Curry. I second it.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the Board? Mrs. Buford, are there any comments from the public on the Supplies Report?
There are no comments from the public on the Supplies Report.
Thank you very much. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. Okay, motion carried. The Transportation Report, Mrs. Dawes.
Good evening. The Transportation Report is in the hands of each Board Member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
This is Mrs. Mitchell. I second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the Board? Mrs. Buford, are there any comments from the public on the Transportation Report?
There are no comments from the public on the Transportation Report.
Thank you very much. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. Motion carried. The Facilities Report, Mr. Fields.
Thank you, President Brown. Before I move for its adoption, I would like to mention a few items on the Facilities Report. Please note that bids received in connection with the bathroom renovations at Drexel Hill Middle School and Stonehurst Elementary School were rejected because the bids that came in were way over budget. These projects will be re-scoped and rebid and rebid. I want to thank the administration for being vigilant about these costs, and in particular, I want to thank the two Craigs, Craig Rogers and Craig Hartnichek. Also, there will be gym floor refinishing. This only occurs at schools with wooden gymnasium floors and is routine maintenance. Aronimic Elementary's gym floor will be re-screened so that it can be properly buffered. Please note that despite the ongoing construction and development, the current Aronimic Gym will be used for the entirety of the 2020-2021 school year. Therefore, the re-screening maintenance is required. That being said, the Facilities Report is in the hands of each Board Member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Do we have a second?
This is David Neal. I second the motion.
Are there any comments from the Board? Mrs. Buford, are there any comments from the public on the Facilities Report?
There are no comments from the public on the Facilities Report.
Thank you very much. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record, Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. Motion carries. The Finance and Budget Report, Dr. Hague.
The Finance and Budget Report is in the hands of each Board Member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
This is Leah Dawes. I second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the Board?
I would, just, sorry, excuse me, Dr. Hague again. I would just like to reiterate that, you know, we don't make these decisions lightly. We are all taxpayers in this community as well, the Board Members are, and that we have looked at so many options. We know that the Aronimic expansion is the most fiscally responsible way to address some really pressing concerns about kids being bused outside of our district, overcrowding in our classrooms, and I really think that the price that we are paying for this bond issuance, it's such a small price to pay for our children's education.
Thank you, Dr. Hague.
This is Don Fields. I'd like to reiterate Dr. Hague's statements. Also, I live here in the district as well, of course, it's sort of my parents who are on a fixed income. But they, like a lot of people, understand the importance of, to home values of a really well-performing schools, and that's what we're working towards. So we don't take it lightly, but it is work that needs to be done, and it's long overdue.
Thank you, Mr. Fields. Are there any other comments from the Board? Mrs. Mitchell?
Thank you, President Brown. I just wanted to ask if Mr. Rogers could just help the public understand that the vote that we're taking tonight on the parameters for the bond issuance, that this isn't the borrowing of the money tonight. So if you could please just clarify that, and I also, because I'm not going to speak after Mr. Rogers does, I did want to say that the district was, has, not taken care of the buildings and the capacity issues for well over 10 to 12 years, and we are doing our due diligence, what we were elected to do. We have a lot of sympathy for what we're going through as, you know, across the globe economically, and we are trying to do what's in the best interest of the community and the students. We can no longer have schools that are overcrowded and students being transported to Glen Alden. It is just not acceptable any longer. We will do our best, and we have, in our previous budget presentation, really gave a clear picture of the things that we have not put in this budget, and we will be going over that again at our May Committee Meeting, so I hope you'll listen in. But now I'll turn it over to Craig. If he could just give a little synopsis of the bond parameters and the timeline going forward.
Yes, of course. The, you are absolutely correct. The MAX resolution going before the Board tonight is simply that, setting the maximum amount that the district could borrow. So if you liken it almost to searching for a home, purchasing a home, you could get a mortgage letter approving you up to a certain amount, it does not mean that you are going to spend every dollar of that commitment. So it's the maximum amount the bond could go to. It is not issuing the actual bond at this point. It is the next step in the process. And we will continue to update the community and the Board as we move through the process, and we would expect, if all things go well, to align this with the bid process of Aronimic and the bond issuance to happen sometime in July or about the timeframe.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rogers, and thank you, Mrs. Mitchell, for requesting that. Are there any other comments from the Board? Are there any comments from the public, Mrs. Buford?
Yes, there are two comments from the public on the Finance and Budget Report. The first comment is from Dorothy Beeter, located at 4409 Moravine Avenue in Drexel Hill. The comment was received today at 8:49 p.m. The comment reads as follows. "The proposed real estate millage will be set at 38.8292 mils. How does that compare to the Act 34 estimate? I could not download any of the previously published files containing that info before the meeting tonight. Where is the sliding scale impact to each property valued at 75,000, 100,000, 200,000, 300,000 that was promised by Mr. Rogers at last meeting and requested during those public comments? Specifically, how has this district incorporated any significant budget cuts as Dr. McGary referenced in his Philadelphia Inquirer interview on May 3, 2020? We did not hear this tonight. Why are capital investments progressing with a bid process during these unprecedented times? Can you show by action, not words, sympathy to the taxpayers? You have been sympathetic to the students and yourselves on the call tonight, so what are you doing for us, the taxpayer, the taxpaying residents required to support the UD School District? You owe the taxpaying residents your due diligence in selecting the most critical of budget line item approvals at this time." And the article that was referenced therein is the Inquirer article dated May, updated May 3. 3, entitled "Schools Brace For Budget Cuts As Coronavirus Wrecks Havoc On The Economy." End of comment.
Thank you very much. He said there's one more comment.
Yes, President Brown. This comment is from Joe and Amy Sullivan, located at 5,000 Moravine Avenue in Druxel Hill. This comment was received today at 9:01 PM. Comment reads as follows. "We are asking that the board consider postponing the expansion of Aronamic Elementary School. There are many concerns that were expressed to the township council regarding the ability of the taxpayers to be burdened by this expense in light of the pandemic. The township will have a decrease in collected taxes due to taxpayers being out of work, businesses losing business, and possibly going out of business, and the Druxel Line Shopping Center now without many businesses paying taxes. Have proper permits been obtained in order to bid this job, including the NPDES, National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System? End of comment."
Thank you very much. So, since there are no more comments from the board, all from the public, I'm sorry. Mr. Dr. McGary, you have a statement? You'd like to respond, please?
Yes, I just want to make sure that we point out to the public that the board will be taking action on the Delaware County Community College budget this evening. Delaware County Community College has reported a 1% increase to their budget. They are freezing tuition for students, which is a benefit to our community and to our students, and they did let us know that there would be a 1% increase to their overall budget. With that said, however, the Upper Darby School District contribution, historical contribution, and for this year, for their budget, to balance their budget, we will see a decrease of close to 16, a little bit over $16,000. There will be some other school districts who are actually seeing an increase in their contributions to the Delaware County Community College. Upper Darby School District is actually seeing a decrease, and Delaware County Community College will be freezing tuition for students. I just wanted to make sure that we pointed that out before the board took action on that item. Thank you, Board President Brown.
Thank you, Dr. McGary, for pointing that out. Okay, now, for the finance and budget report, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record.
President Brown, this is David Neal. I'm voting yes to the report excluding the items regarding Delaware County Community College pursuant to Pennsylvania Public Official and Employee Ethics Law. I'm required to abstain because of my employment by Delaware County Community College.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. That is noted for the record. Are there any other abstaining? I think all the other votes were aye, and there were no opposed. Motion carries. Now, we will have our collateral assignment reports. We'll start with Delaware County Community College. Mrs. Curry.
Thank you, President Brown. As most of you are aware, we are in a pandemic, and unfortunately, Delaware County Community College has not held any liaison appointment or meeting, but they have continued to keep us updated with information according to what's happening in their, on their agenda. So, we did move forward tonight in our vote to reassign a board member that needed to be reassigned, and as Superintendent McGary spoke tonight about the Delaware County Community College freezing their tuition, this is something that will hopefully be beneficial to students and community members. And Dr. Black has asked that we continue to support the Delaware County Community College and students in their attendance there. So, that's all I have for that report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Curry. The DCIU, Mrs. Mitchell.
Thank you, President Brown. This is Mrs. Mitchell. I am presenting a report tonight on the Delaware County Intermediate Unit's May 6 board meeting. As you know, the Board of School Directors, of which I serve on for the Delaware County Intermediate Unit, at your pleasure, meets twice a month. We met last Wednesday, and we'll meet again tomorrow night. Virtually, we are meeting just like this board is meeting. So, here are some of the highlights from what we approved at the last meeting, and you'll note some of these are coronavirus-specific. Approval to support professional development opportunities for the IU and district staff. We approved a contract with infrastructure for 550 software licenses for Canvas Cloud to support the DCIU online learning classes for the 2020-21 school year. A contract with Frontline, a professional development management system to provide My Learning Plan and Oasis to our internal programs and member districts for the 2020-21 school year. We also approved grants, contracts, and appointments as such. We submitted an application for the Pennsylvania Pre-K Counts continuation of funding application for the fiscal year beginning July 1. Submission of the Early Head Start Child Partnership Baseline Non-Competitive Grant Application for Fiscal Year Starting September 1, 2020. Affordable Care Act Track Providing ACA Filing Services As Required By The State Of New Jersey For Those Employees Living In That State. We accepted a proposal from Gallagher Benefits for Insurance. We renewed a contract with Leader Services for IEP Writer and Star Module Software Beginning July 1. Here's another coronavirus implication. The IU purchased 1,000 tablets with built-in internet access from T-Mobile to provide students for the facilitation of remote education across multiple DCIU programs. We purchased 1,000 licenses from Zoom for the period beginning April 21, 2020 to next April to provide DCIU staff and contractors for the facilitation of remote education. Let's see. We also renewed our partnership with ATI to allow practical nursing students to test remotely. That cost, however, will be funded by our students' tuition. And one of the other things that I found of interest was the CARES money. We approved an application for emergency financial aid grants to provide direct cash payments to practical nursing students under the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act at no cost to the DCIU. Again, our next board meeting will be on June 3 at 6:45 via Zoom, if anyone is interested. But we also have a committee meeting tomorrow night, so thank you for allowing me to present this report, President Brown.
Thank you very much, Vice President Mitchell. Legislative Council, Mr. Fields.
Thank you, President Brown. There are a number of bills before the Pennsylvania State Legislature that also meets virtually, just like us. These bills range from charter reforms and property tax reform. It's challenging to get bills passed during this period since no one really knows what state finances will be like next month, much less what they will be like next year. One bill of note, HB 1076, this is the Senior Volunteers and Property Tax Bill. This bill would allow school districts to establish a program benefiting taxpayers 60 years or older who provide volunteer service to the school district by granting a reduction in their property taxes. The volunteer services provided by the participants in the program could not replace or supplant existing job positions, Dr. McGary, and districts would be permitted to seek private and public funding sources to support the program. So, that's one of the bills that are up there. Yesterday was also advocacy day, where board members and public school advocates met with state representatives to advocate for proper school funding and explain our district's financial circumstances. Board members Rachel Mitchell, Gina Curry, Neil Lewis-Noyers, Meredith Hague, Ed Brown, and myself met with both Reps Michael Zabel and Margot Davidson. Also in attendance were Dr. McGary and Craig Rogers. Dr. McGary and Mr. Rogers represented Upper Darby School District and explained its financial concerns very well, and my thanks go out to both of them. There was a meeting this morning with Senator Tim Carney. Due to work, I was not able to attend this meeting. If someone else would like to summarize, please go right ahead, and that'll conclude my part of the report.
Mr. Fields, this is Rachel Mitchell. I am happy to summarize today's meeting. We, the Delaware County Intermediate Unit, did organize a meeting today with all of the, all four senators that represent the Delaware County School Districts. That would be our very own Senator Carney, Senator Williams, Senator Killian, and Senator Leach. We had all 15 school districts represented at today's meeting, and I know Mr. War Savage was also on the calls yesterday, and I believe this morning. We spent an hour with these legislators going over our challenges, and they did present some ideas that we're looking into to try to, you know, get some help with. One, I know Mr. Brown's very interested in trying to get internet access blanketed over our entire county, and we are, you know, we did agree on this call this morning to try to write a letter to those providers collectively with the endorsement of our legislators to try to get something like that to happen, especially since there's so much uncertainty going forward. So, all in all, I thought it was a great meeting. I think it's really important that our legislators continue to hear from us as school board directors, but they're sort of used to us. So, we are encouraging our community, really, to reach out to all of our legislators with some of these challenges. I know the state has a very large decrease in revenue, and they are very concerned about that, and we are concerned about that locally as well. And we are, you know, we are really tasked with providing for the needs of students. That is what's in the U.S. Constitution, the PA Constitution. I can't remember the exact words off the top of my head, but you can read it there. I also do want to just remind all board members that we did have a previously scheduled legislative breakfast for Friday. Obviously, that has been postponed. We can't meet in person. We are planning, as a legislative council, to meet virtually for breakfast on June 5 from 8:00 to 9:30. I'm assuming it's bring your own coffee and, you know, whatever your breakfast item is of choice, but it will be another great opportunity for us to have discussions with our legislators and, you know, as this budget process continues. We are keeping them in the loop, and they are keeping us in the loop, and we are doing our best to try to do what's best for the taxpayers and the students. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Mitchell, for that summary. The Mendenhall Tyson Scholarship Committee, Dr. Hague.
Thank you, President Brown. The Mendenhall Tyson Scholarship Committee met this morning, in fact, and it was great to finally get to see these people I've been seeing over email, people based on the business. And especially great to hear about the incredible students that we have, and we got to hear not only about the awardees, who I cannot name at this point, but who will be named later this month, but to hear about the students who are receiving the scholarship this year, but also we got updates on the students who have received the scholarship for the past four years and are in college now. And, you know, our students, past and present, are just really doing amazing, incredible things. They're really inspiring and just evidence of what truly great work our teachers and administrators and everyone in the school district is doing, and that's all I've got.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hague. We look forward to hearing more as that progresses. Home and School, Mr. War Savage.
Thank you very much, President Brown. The district home and school committee will be meeting actually tomorrow from 5:00 to 6:00. Google meet invitations have already been previously sent out to everyone's email addresses on file, and we will be, we plan on discussing past committee presentations from the school board, the future of our online instructional program, and address any questions or concerns that our home and school representatives have. And once again, I do want to reiterate the fact that home and school associations always need increased participation, and it's going to be even more vital now, given the current environment that we find ourselves in. So, again, if you are already not familiar with what your social media presence or your local home and school board, or local home and school happens to be, reach out to the official Upper Darby School District Facebook page, and we'll get you in contact.
Thank you very much, Mr. War Savage. Technology, I just wanted, Dr. McGary, if you would, just talk about the Chromebooks for a minute. I just wanted, you know, you can tell us how many we've given out so far and just address that a little bit, if you would be so kind. Thank you, sir.
Yes, compliments to a couple people in the school district. Obviously, the board's guidance and leadership over this period of time to continue in the budget to make sure that we are investing in technology. It's one of the comprehensive plans in the school district budget to try to get as close to one-to-one as possible. Bob Holinsky, he was the director of our technology, who's been here countless hours. Dr. Manfree, Mr. Salerno, been driving around and handing out Chromebooks personally to the families who maybe have someone on the front line working and getting them out. We've given out over 3,200 Chromebooks in the school district. We've also obviously written a grant. We talked about that last month. We wrote a grant, and we received over $491,000 in what is called an equity grant. We were going to then take that equity grant and purchase another 3,000 Chromebooks. That equity grant, which is one-time money, would have normally come from taxpayers and come out of the budget. We're able to offset some of those costs by using that money. So, over the last year or so, I know, Board President Brown, you mentioned this, I think, last month when we met, the school district, for those who are viewing, because we have, I think, over 80 folks involved watching us tonight, we've written upwards of over $6 million in grant money over the last two years. Safety grants to improve our safeties, cameras in our facilities. We're working on that during the closure, as well as the opportunity to add Chromebooks to the school district. And in this budget, if this budget does pass, we'll be looking to not only add to the $491,000 grant money in the Chromebooks, but add another over 2,2500 more Chromebooks in the regular budget. Our goal, at a minimum, is to try to get one-to-one at least 6th through 12th grade by the start of next school year, and depending on how hard the board pushes, which is usually pretty hard, we'll see how many more we can get in the hands of our students next school year. But compliments to the team, the administration, Central Office, Bob Holinsky, and the board for writing that grant, and Wendy Elgart, who also wears a lot of hats in the school district, helping us pull that off.
Thank you very much. Kudos to everybody you named. I really appreciate all the hard work. And regarding the Chromebooks, you know, obviously, they're a nice tool, but if they take them home, they don't have built-in internet, so if they don't have adequate Wi-Fi at home, then they're not really doing a lot of good. So, I was really encouraged this morning, when I mentioned that with the meeting with the senators, that they really should advocate to the internet service providers, the major ones, you know, Comcast and RCN and Verizon, to get them to blanket Delaware County with free Wi-Fi, not discounted ones, not $10 a month, not $12 a month, when it costs them pennies on the dollar. I'm talking about free Wi-Fi for the county during the duration of COVID-19, and they was receptive to that. So, as Vice President Mitchell stated, they agreed to put together a joint letter that I've been asked to help write, so that we can get them, get the right attention to that and hopefully get that done. So, really happy about that. Mr. Fields, do you have anything technology-related to add?
I think you covered it well.
Thank you very much. PSBA, Mrs. Curry.
Thank you, Board President Brown. I just want to congratulate you for making those comments this morning at the senators' meeting, and I just really do hope that that initiative can go forward to get the free Wi-Fi for our students and families. Thank you. For the PSBA, I just have some quick Liaison Insider updates. The Liaison Insider is a publication that is brought forward by the PSBA to be read with the updates at our with the updates at our monthly board meetings, and so there are just a few. The first one is a new law that extends time for employee background checks. Governor Tom Wolf signed into law House Bill 360, now Act 18 of 2020. PSBA sought enactment for the bill, which grants current school employees an extension until December 31, 2020, to obtain renewed federal criminal history clearance, background clearance checks as required by state law, both PA, school code, and Child Protective Services Law requires school, current school employees to obtain new clearances every five years, but with most, if not all, of the approved fingerprinting stations in the state have closed, and employees are unable to obtain their clearances. Act 18 provides needed relief to employees and their school districts. Another one noteworthy is the 2021 Legislative Platform Voting Delegate. I've been a voting delegate twice, and it's a very important role for the PSBA. The school boards are invited to submit proposals for PSBA's 2021 Legislative Platform. The deadline to submit items is June 30. Proposals will be reviewed by the PSBA Platform Committee, and on August 1, review final considerations by the Delegate Assembly on November 7. On April 30, the School Board Secretaries received an email with information regarding the Delegate Assembly meeting and a link to submit names of their voting delegates. In addition, individual school directors will be invited to participate in a separate process to select PSBA legislative priorities for the upcoming 2021-2022 session of the General Assembly. More information will be available soon, and that concludes my report.
Thank you very much for that comprehensive report, Mrs. Curry. The Policy Committee, Mr. Desnoyers.
Yes, just one quick thing. I believe I mentioned this last meeting, but there, I've had a couple very initial discussions about possible updates to the policies primarily, primarily policy 06.1 concerning basically virtual school board meetings. So that will likely be moving forward sometime in the reasonably near future. That's all I have to report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Desnoyers. Communication, Mr. Neal or Vice President Mitchell, anything to add for communications?
Yes, Mr. President, this is Mrs. Mitchell. As we discussed earlier, the budget, there will be something coming out very soon from Dr. McGary and the Board in regards to the budget and what the considerations have been and will continue to be during this process. So please be looking for that on our website, and I also did want to encourage community members who will be watching tonight to please sign up for our, you can sign up to receive these even if you aren't a parent in the district, and we would like for you to do that on our website. So we hope that you do so that you stay informed.
Thank you very much, Vice President Mitchell. Mr. Neal, did you have anything to add?
I do not, no, thank you.
Thank you very much. I think that covers all of our collateral assignments. Is there any old business from board members?
Mr. President, this is Mrs. Mitchell. I have old business.
Yes, please proceed.
I just wanted to, again, say a big thank you to our administrative staff, our teachers, all of our staff who is working with our students remotely and planning for the future. We know that you're working very hard, that this is hard, and we appreciate you.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate that, and I'm sure the administrators and everyone, the teachers, everyone really appreciates that. Thank you for mentioning that. Is there any other old business from board members? Okay, seeing none. New business?
Mr. Brown, this is Mrs. Mitchell again. I'm sorry I'm talking so much tonight, but I do have new business.
Please proceed.
I have a resolution tonight that I'm asking the Board to support. It is listed in Board Docs under New Business. It is in the public comment as well as the executive comment. I will read it just for those listening online. A resolution urging the General Assembly to maintain its investment in our public schools and students by the Board of School Directors of the Upper Darby School District. Whereas Pennsylvania's more than 1.7 million public school students deserve the highest quality education, and the state's public schools work best when they have the resources to give all students the opportunities they need to succeed, and whereas Pennsylvania ranks 44th among the 50 states in the amount of state subsidies allowed to support elementary and secondary education, among the lowest in the nation with the state's share of funding public education at 38%. And Pennsylvania has the widest funding gap between wealthy and poor school districts of any state in the country, and whereas the state has failed to keep its pace with the rising cost of mandated special education for students with disabilities, which has increased by 1.7 billion over the last decade, even as the state's share of the cost has fallen from 32 to 22%. And whereas the state has also failed to provide adequate resources for career and technical education, CTE pathways for students, allowing its share of CTE funding to fall to 8%, leaving local taxpayers with a 90% share of the CTE budget, and whereas the Upper Darby School District is already underfunded by the state by approximately $16 million. And whereas the Upper Darby School Board of Directors recognizes the unique circumstances due to the COVID-19 global pandemic will cause a shortfall in revenue for the Commonwealth's upcoming 2020-2021 fiscal year budget, and whereas failure of the General Assembly to maintain its current level of education funding would irreparably damage the students of the Upper Darby School District and the entire Upper Darby School District community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Upper Darby School District urges the General Assembly to prioritize public education in the Commonwealth's 2020-2021 fiscal year budget, and at a minimum, maintain its current level of education funding. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be submitted to the elected officials, Senator Carney and Representative Margot Davidson, and Representative Mike Zabel of the Upper Darby School District in the General Assembly, and to the Governor of Pennsylvania. I move for this to be adopted by the school board tonight.
This is David Neal. I second that motion.
All those in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Anyone abstaining? Resolution carries, motion carries. Thank you very much, Mrs. Mitchell. Is there any other new business from board members? Okay, seeing none. We are now at the time for the public hearing. We will read both emailed and phoned comments, which are subject to the three-minute time limit and must include the commenter's name and address. Mrs. Buford, please proceed as needed.
There are no comments from the public at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there a motion for adjournment of the meeting?
This is Dr. Hague, so move.
This is Mrs. Mitchell, second.
Please signify by voting, by voting aye.
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 Meeting adjourned.